For school board meeting, for roll call, all members of the present with the exception of Mike Edmund and our superintendent, Andy Treino. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Thank you. We have the minutes before you. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 25th, 2025 school board meeting.
Thank you, Mari. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mari, second by Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda before you.
Motion to approve the, uh, agenda is offered.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dan, second by Mari to approve the agenda for Tuesday, March 11th school board meeting as presented. Any discussion or additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Our aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We have this evening, a couple of very exciting and fun school reports or presentations. We'll start with Knowledge Bowl. We have Joelle Thomas and Sandy Melo. Is that right?
Yeah, she's in association.
Oh, she's not here, but Joelle Thomas.
I'm here though.
Yes. We'll turn the time over to you.
Awesome. Thank you. So, good evening, school board. I am the current Knowledge Bowl coach. My name is Joelle Thomas. This year, we had 12 students that came out for Knowledge Bowl. We have four of those which are seniors and are moving on next year. Our newest recruit, we have a seventh grader on the team, which is exciting. Last year, we had 11 students, so we went up by 1 this year, even though we lost five seniors last year. So, the trajectory is going upward. I'm gonna turn it over to our team captains.
So, I'm just gonna give a little bit of an explanation about what Knowledge Bowl is. We have one written round and then four oral rounds following every tournament. The written round is a sixty question packet where we are given forty-five minutes. They are all multiple choice questions. And they cover anything from art to history to literature, science, and everything in between there. The oral rounds are forty-five questions. You will compete against two other teams at the same time. Essentially, first to, it's kind of like Jeopardy. First to buzz in gets to answer the question. And that means that you could buzz in at any time when the question's asking. So, there is obviously risk involved with trying to buzz faster. I've done Knowledge Bowl since seventh grade. My name's Dominic Lin Mai. I am a senior and team captain. I did have a one-year break. And I think I'm kind of the representative for recruiting in the youth is because I was part of the people that got recruited in our before-school event. I signed up right at the table on the first day because I was so interested in the activity and has continued to remain a success as we've gone on. I'm gonna pass it to my next.
Hello, my name is Isaac Thomas. I am another senior on the Fairmont Hologicle team. You might be asking, how do we prepare for a meet? Usually, our practices consist of just doing a single oral round. This can last us either between thirty minutes to an hour, depending on how long and how many times we buzz in for a single question. A single question has lasted us like five minutes because we read through most of the questions, somebody buzzes in, gets it wrong. Then the next, other than to reread, you have to reread the question, then it happens again. You get most of the way through the question, like missing two words. Another team buzzes in, gets it wrong, and now the final team just lets the whole question get read. So, this can happen and lasts, makes the practice last longer and longer. But usually, we don't like read Wikipedia articles. We just play. We get the understanding of how rounds work. And I feel like that is more beneficial to the team as a whole, rather than just trying to learn, learn, learn. But rather getting a feeling for what the activity truly is. I'm gonna pass it to the next member. Go.
Hello, my name is Kailan Joe. I'm another senior. I joined Knowledge Bowl last year, so this will be my second year doing it. I kind of joined it as a whim, but it's been so much fun. I've created so many memories with my team members. And I honestly wish I would have joined it sooner. I think more people should know about it. We don't have a lot of people who do it. But the people who've done it have had honestly a lot of unity, and we've created such a fun team bond that I think it should, it should obviously have a lot more members because I think a lot of people would really enjoy it.
Hold your hands.
Hi, my name is Michelle Skowal. I'm a ninth grader, and I just joined Knowledge Bowl this year. Yes, I understand it may be my first year, but I already love the activity so much. It has brought me a lot of new friendships and relationships that I never personally thought that I would build throughout this year. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity that I've been given to join Knowledge Bowl. It's such an amazing activity. And I believe that so many, so many more people would enjoy and love it if they were to join.
Hi, my name is Hudson Clayton. I am a seventh grader. I just joined this year. It was a really fun year because I got to experience what Knowledge Bowl was like for the first time. And it was, it was really difficult, but at the same time, we got to go on so many different trips and see so many different places. And then, we get to go into the college or school, and we get to answer questions. I mean, how fun is that? So, yeah, it was really a good experience and good for sharpening your mind.
All right, so now we have a challenge for you guys. You guys want to help me? Okay, so I'm only going to test questions, but we've got our equipment ready to rock and roll. We're gonna put it out. We're also gonna give you guys paper and pencil so you guys can calculate and scheme and get ready to answer.
Do you want to give them paper and pencils?
Um, we are one team, so we're challenging them. All in good fun, all in good fun. The winner gets to do a victory lap. So, if you guys want to join, and I don't think our equipment will quite reach over to this side, but if you guys want to join with another person that has a strip in front of them, that would be great. We can put it over.
Switch A and B to M and B?
Yeah, switch A and B.
There we go.
There's always a matter of logistics.
Hudson, you want to get the extra?
I think they're bringing in the, I don't know.
Sorry about the equipment not fully reaching all the way across.
It is two thousand and two technology.
Yeah, it is O two technology. Give us some, he's about twenty-three years old.
A little bit outdated.
How do we buzz? We just tap?
Yep, we'll try it here in just one second. All right, if you are Team A, or wait.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you guys are Team A.
Want to buzz?
You buzz? Okay, A works. That's C. You guys are C. D works and...
D?
We're C. It's not working?
You got our wires crossed over there or no?
There we go, there we go. We got our Mari in. Here, let's try it one more time. New question. And A. There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
You two have to push it kind of hard.
Yes.
It is, they are twenty-three years old.
You gotta get aggressive with it.
They've been, they've been mangled a bit.
All right, are we ready to rock and roll?
Yes.
Okay, here's our first question. In Greek one mythology, a labyrinth was built for King Minos of Knossos to contain what cre- C.
Minotaur?
Correct. All right, the next, the next one is paper and pencil, so you're gonna need to write in your pencil and your paper. As of November 2023, how many years has the United States had fifty states? C is buzzing.
Sixty-one years?
Incorrect. A is buzzing. Incorrect. Uh, the question has been read in full. If B wants to take a shot at it. There we go.
Sixty.
Incorrect. The correct answer is sixty-four. You guys are so close. You know what?
You are correct.
He was correct. He said the twenty-four packet that they give us.
It gave, it gives the date, so he would be incorrect still. Yep, says November of 2023.
Oh.
It does give specific.
Technicalities, young.
Come on, give one of those.
Here's our next one. New question. Meaning apple of the earth. Pom d'Etat, C.
Potato?
Correct. The answer is, or the question is, is the French term for what popular, popular tuber? Oh, it amazes me that they get these right. Our next one is, what name is given to a widespread, long-lived windstorm associated with a fast-moving band? C.
Hurricane?
Incorrect. A.
Delic, deli- Rico.
Correct, yeah.
What was it?
A Doratio, yes. Okay, here's our next one. What Spanish word means both doll and seed?
Alternative spoke first?
Muiñeca.
All right, I'll give you a paper and pencil one that has some calculating here too. What is the range of the function three plus four sine of x? C.
Zero two five?
Incorrect. Yep, I, oh no, I can't. It's read in full, I'm sorry. If anybody else wants to buzz in.
We don't.
Okay, that's fine. We can go, okay, we'll do, we'll do two more questions, okay?
Two to four.
All right.
What was the answer to?
Oh, I am so sorry, negative one to seven. I like having the answers inside of me. Okay, our next question. The name of what figure of speech can be found in the word that means a copy or reproduction of an old book? C.
Anaphra?
Incorrect. Anybody else would like to buzz in?
Ditto?
Incorrect. It is a simile.
It's a what?
A simile. Who knew? Okay, and our last question. What number describes the count of both the legendary kings of Rome before the Republic and the hills on which the city Rome was built?
You didn't hit your question.
C.
Twelve?
Incorrect.
Tell me the difference.
B.
Seven.
Yeah, B, B is up right now. Correct. So, our final scores are A with one, B with one, and C with three. Thank you guys so much for playing. They're hard questions.
And did you pick hard questions?
The only one I knew was the Spanish version, which was Muiñeca.
No, we asked for them and they said that would be cheating. I was just saying on my own, preparations.
Thank you. That was very fun.
A lot of fun.
And...
Absolutely. Thank you guys for hearing us out.
How often do you have meets?
What, probably about six this year?
Yeah, we had six overall.
Six. And are they during the school day or on the weekend?
They're during the school day, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to, we don't have a superintendent's report and calendar because superintendent Jo isn't here. There is however, his calendar is in the board package. If you're aware of that. For financial business, we have Jessica.
Yes, so you have the wire transfers from February 26th. Go from twenty-five to March fifteenth. This covers our normal payroll and other bill runs. We have a single check run in here for one of our state wrestling meals, or meat meals, and then we have tonight's bills from March eleven. Do you have any questions on any of the bill packets?
I will make a motion to approve the wire transfers from two twenty-six, twenty-five to three, five, twenty-five. And the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five single check and the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five bills.
All seconded. Thank you. A motion by Jen, second by Mari.
Shayna, second by Shayna.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. We have policy revisions, which are in appendix A.
All right, so the first one, policy five sixteen, that one is just a revision for MVA, sure, MSBA, MVA, I'm thinking Mercy. For MSBA guidelines, there were two changes in there. Let's highlight it if you want to read through that. So, I will make the motion to approve the revised policy five sixteen student medications and health.
All seconded. We have a motion by Jen, second by Mari to approve policy six, five one six as presented in appendix A. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next policy business is the first reading of policy five one zero point two, open gym policy, and new policy seven zero five point one, hunt fund allocation parameters. Those are found respectively in appendix B and C.
The open gym policy, just to highlight a few things with this new policy. There's no coaching of skills and techniques of activities provided in the school interscholastic athletic program. There is no requirement for students to attend open gym activities as a prerequisite for membership on a high school team. And lastly, just to highlight, high school coaches may not participate in games, pickup days, provide instruction in the skills of a sport, or otherwise influence a high school athlete's participation in open gym. And then, there's other aspects of that policy as well, but those were a few just to highlight. And then, the other policy that is a new policy is the hunt fund allocation parameters, just where the, um, the hunt farm money is, or the, that was the money basically is going, and that it's identified that ninety percent of the annual net revenue from the hunt farm will be used for student enrichment programs and student scholarships. Yep, so I will make a motion to approve the first reading, new policy five ten point two, open gym policy, and policy seven oh five point one, hunt farm allocation parameters.
Thank you. A motion by Jen, second by Mari for the approval, first reading approval of policy five one zero point two and policy seven zero five point one. Any discussion?
So, for these ones, it is the first reading. I believe the text is available for whomever would like to, to look through it and have any input or comments as far as additions or concerns about either of those two policies and you could hopefully well talk about them.
Yep. The open gym policy is, the purpose of that is to just, rather than students, coaches, parents having to go to Minnesota State High School to see what the policies are.
having to go to Minnesota State High School League to see what the policies are there and we have to follow because of our participation. It's actually a policy that we decided to implement officially within our own school district and really it's to help protect our student athletes from disciplinary action, for lack of better word, from Minnesota State High School League and to provide our coaches with guidance about what is appropriate and acceptable contact time based mostly with our student athletes. So, I think it's a good policy to have a place. It, it makes it very easy to understand and to know exactly what the expectations are from the Minnesota State High School League and also our district. And the hunt fund allocation parameters, the main thing with that is just that we set the percentage of 90% of the annual net revenue, which is what Jen said. So, anyway, so we'll read that for the first time today and then we'll come back to it again next meeting and vote on the actual motion to approve them. So, any questions or further discussion about those? Okay, then we will move on to personnel. We have employment and Mike, was that Mike? That was not Mike. Mari, Dan, okay.
Okay, first we have Principal Schultz recommending that Bryn Miller be hired as a long-term substitute at the high school for dates including our current week and then also from March 31st to the end of the school year on June 5th, 2025. And Activities Director Mahoney is recommending employment of this year's spring athletic coaches as shown in Appendix D. It, the new coaches are listed in red, so I can see that we have very much experienced staff coming back, lots of whom are Fairmont graduates as well that are putting their time back into the program, whether it be baseball, softball, golf, tennis, or track and field. So, I would move to approve of the employment of Bryn Miller and the spring athletic coaches as the student in Appendix D.
Thank you. Dan, do we have a second? We have a motion by Dan, second by Jen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a retirement. Mari?
Jennifer Daniel, an elementary teacher, has indicated her intention to retire at the end of this school year effective June 6, 2025. Jennifer's served our district for 26 years since August 28th of 1998, so thank you for all those years. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the retirement of Jennifer Daniel, elementary teacher effective June 6, 2025.
I'll second it. Thank you. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Jennifer for all of her years of service. She's been here a long time. It's had a great impact on many students. I think her most recent assignment was kindergarten. I think that's where she's mostly served since I can remember and so she gets those students when they first come into the building and fills their hearts and minds with excitement for learning and I appreciate that a lot and she will be missed. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we have the Board Committee report. Mike is not here, so we'll turn the time over to Dan for the Operations Committee meeting.
We have the minutes here. We discussed our targets and goals for the revised budget for this year and preliminary budget for 2025, 26. We got an update on the future of our gymnastics facility as far as where that, that participation might be going in the next coming years. We had the food service request for proposal which talked about three different food service vendors who have concerned, confirmed site visits to us and there'll be sampling events that I know some of our board members and their families will be participating in. We had the continuing disclosure report, which gives, it gives us an idea of how much certain entities pay to the school district or our tax base, which is always eye-opening data to see. We had our superintendent take us through an OBA model review, which is basically comparing our school district's spending on different things to like-sized districts in Minnesota when it comes to either ones in the area here or ones with similar enrollment statewide. And so that gives us an idea of what we want to do for budget targets as far as knowing what we're spending on and what we're not and how that compares to many other districts and it's extremely helpful information. And we did have a fairly comprehensive review of the facilities assessment and what the progress continues on as far as what we're looking at for updates and ideas on how to keep our facilities in the best of condition too. So, about a two-hour meeting and we were there, Nicole, and I thought it was very productive.
It was. It was long, it was.
A lot of good information shared.
Yeah, very informative. Any questions for Dan or myself regarding that meeting? Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to approve this School Board meeting.
Thank you, Mari. Second, a motion by Mari, second by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.